To Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and an application. Let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, I'm going to ask everybody remain standing in memory of Board of Health member Dave Lawrence who's passed away.
I pledge allegiance to the might of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with verity and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lawrence was a longtime member with the Board of Health, so our condolences go out to his family and to the board. Mr. Townsend will be doing the community prayer.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to community citizens' participation, I'm going to take a little executive privilege here. Reason I was holding up to make sure we got past a little after seven because I wanted to make sure that Mr. Belbin was here. I once said that, you know, if I mess up and I owe someone an apology, I'm going to make that apology and I'm going to make it in public session. I had a correspondence with Mr. Milonowski. It was concerning something that Mr. Belbin had gone ahead and written about and another one of his concerns. And whether I just agreed with it or disagreed with it or not, I went ahead and I used the unfortunate term. I said, "The boy is getting close to the limit." It's obvious Mr. Belbin is not a boy. He's a full grown man. And it was improper of me to even use that phrase. There is no excuse. Shouldn't have said it, won't say it again. But I did want to make sure Mr. Belbin was here to hear this apology because I apologize for using that term in that regard. It was totally inexcusable. With that, we will move on to citizen participation. And Ms. Farand, I believe you want something you really wanted to get out here? So I'm going to let you come first. We ask, because there may be a lot of speakers, that if you can keep it to three minutes, that's good because our citizen participation is 10 minutes long.
Okay. Hi, I'm Donna Marie Florand and I live at 27-8 South Meadow Village. I've been a resident of the town for an awfully long time and recently I moved back to the town to participate in the town and to help make our town better than what it is today. But I just wanted just to come before everybody and just say, I'm really concerned with the town, the hostility that's going on, and I really would like to do a type of function to bring healing back to the town. And I would like to have it sometime during the month of March. And I really wanted to open it up to every single organization in town, the churches, the police department, the fire department, the teachers, the school, the residents, the council on aging. I would like it to be all inclusive, nobody left behind, nobody left out. And I would like to have it at the high school. I've already gone before the school committee and got permission from the school committee to use the auditorium. And then we would probably have an overflow into the gymnasium as well. It's in the planning, it's in the works. If you are interested in participating on an open committee to help us get this up and running as soon as possible. So it would be a night of hope and healing and hope and encouragement, appreciation and love. And I think it's really important that we go ahead and work on this because unity is important and I think we need to get back to the unity of the town and that's important. And so I would like to also talk about that. But I just wanted to bring up to the selectmen. I have a video and it's on bullying and I really would like to introduce it someday to the selectmen. And it's important because people don't realize the negative things that you say about somebody could be considered as bullying. And it's important that we treat each other with respect no matter who we are. And I try to respect every single person and when I don't agree with somebody, I try to go right to the source and I try not to put it on social media. And social media is ruining this town and we need to take control back. If you are interested in helping our town and be involved in any type of program, I would be more than happy to talk to anybody, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Dagmar, have you got something you want to say? Okay. No, because I'm trying to get people that don't usually get up to say. And if I have to extend citizen participation, I will.
I just have a question. Dagmar Ryan, 14 Lillian Way, hi guys. I have a question and I asked my husband about it and he said I had to go look at an article. But long story short, I went to recreation committee meeting and I saw Tom Lynn, I believe is the architect, the landscape architect that's also doing the police station. And he was doing wonderful plans and working with everybody and trying to figure things out. And I thought about it after I left to go, how's he getting paid? So then I asked the recreation department, I said, like, where's the money coming from to pay this architect? Is he doing it for free? And they said they asked the chairman, the chairman didn't know. So then goes look at the article. So I looked at the article and then I don't, for the police station, because I'm trying to figure out, maybe you can answer, how is the, where's the money coming to pay for Tom Lynn and the architect work on the recreational complex when I don't think the intent of the police station article was to, for designing a different thing in a different site? Like, it seems like the funds, if the funds are coming from the police station, which they might not be, then, I mean, how does that work?
Dagmar, normally we do not go into discussions and stuff that's not on our agenda.
Oh, 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 but anyway, maybe somebody, yeah.
However, I'm sure you're not the only one that was wondering that. And Mr. Milonowski, would you please explain again how the whole process goes with the police station and the fact that he's doing one, he can do both?
Yes. Currently, he is being paid, it's a contract addendum, amended, that was done to the land, to our architect for the police station to add on the services of expanding the landscape architect to include this work. In addition to that, we've also expanded the scope of service for our owner's project manager so that they can oversee this project as well. It's all legitimate and follows the public procurement process and I'm more than happy to talk about that in person and respond to that in more detail with backup documents should that be needed.
Thank you very much. So, you know, it's all, it's just been contract extension, so, you know, it's not like we just brought them in from outside.
Well, I just, because it didn't seem like the intent of the article was for that, so...
It's allowed under construction and all that other good stuff.
All right, well, good to know. Now we know. Now I can go next door and tell them where the funds are coming from.
But also, you know, if you have any further questions, I believe you could go ahead and make an appointment to see Mr. Milonowski. He's very, you know, he's more than happy to go ahead and have you come in and he can explain it to you.
Oh, good. Well, I wanted to know before I went next door. All right, thanks.
All right. Mr. Belbin.
Robert Belbin, 26 Gate Street. Okay, I have a couple of things. I'll be very quickly. Number one, we didn't have a meeting. We shook on it. We didn't have it. That's number one. The second one is, that was dealing with a memo issue that you and him and town council created. The next one is, you kind of left out the jerk comment, but...
Oh, I'll address that in a little bit.
All right, then, one of the big ones is actually the GATRA buses. The drivers for the GATRA buses, there are a lot of senior citizens that actually drive for them and during the snow time that comes in, they have to clear off all those buses and everything. I was wondering if we could put those in the old fire station so that they don't have to clear off the GATRA buses that are going to the seniors that are out there. Makes it a lot easier for them. We have the facilities. I know we use it for other things in there, but maybe we can make some room in there for them. It'll help them out to clean those GATRA buses off when the snow comes. It's really important.
They'll be a little warmer.
They will be, okay? So, because they don't have to warm them up as much and get them going. Otherwise, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Milonowski, could we, whoever we deal with, just kind of look into this for the possibility?
We will look into it.
Thank you. Any other? All right, next up, we, poll hearing for EverSource and N-Star Old Center Street for new poll number 25A/102S in Sierra. Hi there.
Hi.
We've seen you before.
You have. Donna Howarth, representing EverSource. We are requesting permission to install a poll on Old Center Street in order to stabilize the poll across the street that's beginning to lean.
Oh, the one that's looking funky now?
Yeah, a little bit.
Before discussion, I'll take a motion?
Say that again.
Before discussion, I will take a motion?
I'll make a motion that we...
Approve?
Approve this.
Second, discussion.
I do have a question. If you're putting a poll in to support, it's maybe a silly question, but if you're putting a poll in to support an older poll, wouldn't it be easier, smarter, faster, quicker just to put a new poll in? A thicker poll? They're doing that all over town, so...
Yeah, I rode by the location and I believe it's because the poll that we need to stabilize has a bank of transformers on it. So, just with the weight starts to, so the poll across the street will guide that and...
I should have assumed that the professionals knew what they were doing, but I just had to ask.
They do. Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing nothing. All those in favor of approving this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, ayes nothing. We'll see you the next time.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, vote to release legal opinion on complaint against town administrator from Peter Allegreeni dated December 17, 2018. What this is all about, if you follow social media at all or read Wicked Local or listen to the radio. Town administrator is involved with a civil lawsuit dealing with mainly the town of Hope Dale. There was a couple of things we had to get squared away that I needed to find out about because I went and read the whole lawsuit. And there was one part, section in there that said there was a meeting held in the town of Carver. And I, that was the only thing that read a, you know, raised a potential red flag to me. I went ahead and did due diligence and was able to get irrefutable proof from within town that this meeting took place at Edoville. And also, it was independently confirmed with the selectmen at Hope Dale that yes, indeed, the meeting took place at Edoville, no town property. Now, I'd had several emails from people strongly asking, I'll put it that way, I'll be nice, to go ahead and, you know, conduct investigations and because he's, Mr. Milonowski has been charged with this and these are all serious things, yada, 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 yada. So, not being a lawyer, I went to town council and said, "Look, this is what's out there. This is what I'm being asked. What's town council's opinion? Can you write me something that says basically, there's nothing going on here at the present from what we know? It's a civil matter. There's nothing involving the town. The town doesn't need to do anything." So, they were very nice enough to do that for me. Tim Zesson, who's their labor expert that we deal with in town, wrote a privileged document to me and I shared it with the board stressing very clearly that it was privileged information and could not be released. As part of a records request, it was requested that that be released. We notified correctly the person making the records request that it would have to be released from the Board of Selectment first. So, that's what our executive session was about before. This meeting was to go ahead and release this previously privileged documentation from town council. And I could go ahead and just read the pertinent parts, but I'll let you guys do that. I question, I don't think we really need to take a vote on it because we already voted in executive session, so this is just announcing the release of the document for public use. Mr. Milonowski has copies, I have copies. If anybody here, especially the media, would like a copy, they're here for you. Get them now, get them later. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry. I could be wrong, but usually when we make a vote in executive session, don't we make a vote again in open session?
Well, that's why I asked, do we need to make another vote again? You said no.
You don't necessarily because you're releasing the information, but if you'd like to make another vote, please feel free to do it. I'll pass these out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Milonowski will pass them out. In that case, could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion. Well, here's second. Second, any further discussion on releasing this document? Hearing none. All those in favor of fulfilling the decision we made in executive session to go ahead and release this document, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Done with it. All right. Next up, discussion and positive vote on the reorganization of the board. And everybody's probably been saying, "What the hell is that about?" Well, as of pretty much right now, I am resigning my position as chairman of the Board of Selectmen. It's not something that came easy, but I've been having the ever-loving hell kicked out of me in social media, as has Mr. Milonowski. And as much as I love this town, it ain't worth the extra 300 bucks to put up with this crud. Now, Mr. Belbin brought out that I, in another email with correspondence with Mr. Milonowski, I used the word jerk. And, yep, I did. And because it was in conjunction mainly aimed at two people that I kept getting the same types of emails from telling me, "I need to do this, this is how you do this, and you have to do this, and if you don't do this, you're bad," and then, "Oh, no, now you've got to investigate this and that." And I'd had just about enough between the crud I have to put up with on social media and for anybody to go ahead and think that, well, gee, this guy, you know, just because we've been a little hard on him, these are citizens, you can't call them jerks. I've got news for you. I will only take this crud so long without expressing myself. And if that's go ahead and the fact that I use the term jerk compared to some of the things that have been said about me up to and including that I need to be investigated by the FBI and the AG for RICO statute violations. This job isn't enough to go right the way it is right now. And that's why I was so glad Ms. Farand came up with this idea, this healing meeting. But as Mr. Clark is the vice chair, he automatically becomes chair. Whoops, I took the wrong one. Damn. Did you make me do that? This is the one I took.
Good evening. I guess I'll just take a quick prerogative to mention that things are challenging in town right now. It's a changed world. I had a first term back in the 90s and back then it was speak-out in the local paper where you could anonymously make a phone call to the Carver reporter, have your voice recorded. And then, lo and behold, when the paper came out the following week, there would be an anonymous, you know, printing of whatever they had to say and anything went. They could say anything. Got to the point that you really just, you know, didn't want to see the paper on a Wednesday morning whenever it came out. But, you know, we live in the United States. It's freedom of the press. You get to say anything you want, you get to do anything you want, as long as you don't violate any laws. Then back in the early 2000s, we moved on because they eventually changed speak-out so that you actually had to leave your name. And then as the internet came into play, you had to send an email so they had to know who you were. So then, anything that was published was attached to a name and things, that seemed to calm things down a little bit. Then in the early 2000s, we got fixcarver.com. And if anybody wants to have fun with a little scavenger hunt, somewhere out there on FixCarver is me dressed in prison garb, holding a couple of money bags with a bobble head. So you might want to have some fun trying to find that out there. And then, of course, social media has come into play. And I think we've all seen, not just in the local level, but in the national level, it has changed the nature of politics. One of our politicians famously said, "You're entitled to your own opinion, not your own facts." But in this day and age, everyone's also got their own set of facts to go along with their opinion. And you get to say anything you want. And again, it's still America. It's still freedom of the press. You can go onto Facebook and say anything you want. And that's just the way it is. And if you're going to be in public office in this town, in this country, you just have to be ready to accept that. That's just what it is. Fair, unfair, whoever you like to see it. Unfortunately, I think some good people that would like to pay their civic dues are going to think more than once about whether they want to go onto a committee or run for public office if this is what they're going to expose themselves to. Not so much for themselves, but the idea that friends and family have to read some of the things that are written about them. And it's just almost too much to try to respond. Personally, after everything that's gone on recently, I took myself off of Carver Helping Carver. It used to be you went to Carver Helping Carver to get a good recipe for a cranberry cake or cranberry muffin or something. Now it's just the place to go to read what an awful person you are and how you should be recalled or shipped out. And again, it's America. You can say anything you want, whether it's true or not. And I went off of Everything Carver and, you know, when you get to the point where you tentatively approach your emails because you're afraid of what you're going to see, you really have, you know, I understand where Mr. Dunham's coming from. You really have to think twice. There are good people out there, well-intentioned, that want to challenge the people running their town, in every town, in every town, and that have good intent. There are also people out there that have an agenda. And nothing you say or do is going to change their minds about who you are or who they think you are and what they think you're up to. The only thing I would ask of people who are out on social media, try to stick to just seeing pictures of the kids and the grandkids and try not to use it as a way, as a weapon against people that are just trying to do their jobs. You may disagree with votes that we take up here, but I would be surprised if every single one of us, every time we cast a vote, it wasn't what we honestly thought was best for the town of Carver. That's all you can ask of us. You can vote us out if you disagree with what we're saying, but if we could try to get a return to civility in conversation. There was a suggestion that perhaps if the selectmen met more informally, had like a town hall session at some point where people, we could come in a setting like this and people could just ask questions and have a discourse, a give and take, maybe that might help diffuse the situation. And I think that might be a good idea. I probably would wait till after the election season because there's always a danger if you try to do it during the election season that it gets politicized. But I think sometime in May or June, I think it would be a good idea to maybe call one of these sessions here or at one of the villages or somewhere else and just have a back and forth between the citizens and discuss things. But in the meantime, I really would ask everybody to step back, think about what you're typing, think about the fact that someone's wife, sister, son, daughter, grandparent is going to be reading what's being said. And you may sometimes not realize how it comes across. But again, I'll repeat it again, you can do it. This is America. You have freedom of the press and it cuts across both ways. It can be used for good, it can be used for bad, it can be used for agendas. Hopefully, the idea is to have an honest discussion about things. And so I just hope going forward, from this point on, the board will be as transparent as we possibly can. I think these town, having these town hall type sessions will be good in the future. And I would ask that you at least recognize that when we cast a vote, it's what we think is best for the town. You might disagree with what decision we make, but none of us are here with, I don't believe any of us are here with any, for any reason other than to help the town be as good as it can. So, Alan, I'm sorry to lose you as chair. I understand where you're coming from and I've had those moments. I mean, I'll go back to the early 2000s, back when we had the, some issues, there was some concern about the chief of police and how she was issuing permits, which led to some real concern and some haymaker Board of Selectmen meetings. And I only half joked that when I got home after those meetings that I sort of ducked quickly between windows, afraid that a stray bullet might be coming my way. It was, it was pretty rugged. I can honestly say, and I can look back at a couple of boards before this one where the board itself was just so set against each other, it was about as toxic an atmosphere as I think I've seen in town. So, as bad as things appear to be now, I, in my memory, I've seen them worse. However, our job is to be responsible to the citizens of the town of Carver, to give them our best and provide our best votes as we see them. And I can only promise that going forward, we've done that and we will continue to do that. I welcome anybody, I really would prefer if you pick up the phone and call me, 508-789-3581. I'll be glad to talk to you about things, maybe before you go to social media. But at any rate, again, as much as I may feel social media may yet lead to the downfall of the country, it is what it is. People are entitled to use it and it's freedom of the press. So, at any rate, we will move on now.
Mrs. Chairman, if I may, just before you do, thank you for those kind words. For the few out in social media land that have been insisting that I resign and the two emails I got to my town account basically saying, "I have to resign because of my word, one I apologize for, the other one I will not apologize for," I ain't going to resign. I almost came close to it until I got those emails saying, "You need to resign." And I'll be damned if I'm going to do that. You want to get rid of me? Fine. Town clerk's office is open at 8:00 tomorrow morning. Get the form. You have to fill out a form, get 200 signatures. Once those 200 signatures have been certified, turn them in, then you've got 20 days to get 15% from each district. You can't get a whole bunch from one in a few... You can't get a whole bunch from one and a few from another. It's got to have 15% from each one, and then, once they're certified, we can go on to election, and let's have at it. So, anybody still wanting to do that and go through that work, you got, have fun.
I will say again, I hope that it doesn't come to that and that we can move forward, and just hope that the dialogue and communication going forward can be improved and that we can agree to disagree without making it personal. The town administrator is asking, and I don't know whether we need to technically reorganize as, in the absence of a chair, as vice chair, I become chair, but I guess the question is as to whether we have to technically actually reorganize?
We don't have a vice chair at this point.
So I guess we might as well, I guess to be on the safe side, we might as well do a full reorganization.
Probably the cleanest.
All right. Well, then I guess you would take over as moderator for this?
At your direction. Is there any nominations for chairman?
I nominate Ron Clark.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Can I have a roll call vote?
Dave Robertson, aye.
Sarah Hewens, aye.
Mark Townsend, aye.
Alan Dunham, aye.
It's unanimous. Mr. Chairman?
Is there a motion for a vice chair? I can't do both.
I nominate Dave Robertson.
Second.
Mr. Robertson, want that being that he's involved with an election?
Yeah, I don't know if it's even appropriate, I, you know.
Well, in the old days, we used to make the guy running for public office the chair for the year. I don't know that that works anymore like it used to. That was back in the 90s where that was a fairly common, that was a fairly common thing. But the, it's up to you. You, I guess you've been nominated, so you have to decide whether you accept the nomination or not.
Yeah, I will, I will accept it.
And there was a second?
Boy.
A second.
Boy.
Further discussion?
Bless you.
There being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Do we need to do anything else, like a formal clerk?
Will you take care of notifying town clerk tomorrow morning, please? Thank you.
Okay. Now we move on to, little late. Now we move on to a, the powers and Sullivan, we, it's our town audit review, run by Richard Sullivan of Powers and Sullivan, on the town 2017 audit review, which has been posted on the website, I understand. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I've got a few notes here that I'm just going to go through to try to keep me aligned here. I don't need to make this too formal. If you have any questions along the way, please don't, feel free to interrupt because it would bother me a bit, and sometimes it makes it go better. What I try to do when I sit down before you folks is give you an idea of what we're supposed to do as your auditor, what we look for from the management team. I understand the true scope of the work that's being done. I'll give you my impression of how the audit went, both in the interactions with your personnel, as well as the actual report that we issue. I'm going to highlight some of the things about, what I think are good things about the town for finances. I'm going to talk about your fund balances, which are fairly strong, I think, believe right now. I'm going to talk about OPEB, I'm going to talk about pension liability, and a couple of other things. And that will get us through the financial piece. Then I'll jump on to the, the federal awards report, which will take me a minute, and then we'll talk about the management letter. So the idea of an audit is that we have, as a firm, we have to follow certain guidelines when we do the audit. It's put out by what's called the Uniform Guidance and Government Auditing Standards. I'm not going to bore you with what they mean, but what it puts out is a lot of responsibility on us to do the job right. So in the end, that report that gets issued is in conformance with GAAP and governmental accounting standards. A big part of the responsibility as it relates to us is to make sure we follow certain quality guidelines. We undergo something, a peer review every three years, which means when another firm comes in, looks at our work, and our body of work, and then makes an opinion as to whether we can do, continue to do business as we do it right now. We've been very successful in those, at those times, but I can tell you, there's so much pressure when that goes on because not many people are looking over your shoulder the way those fake people look over our shoulder. Now, there's also a responsibility on the town side, and it's mostly dealing with the financial management and town administrator. So what it is, is in essence, the report that we issue, all 70 pages of it, we only own two pages. It's called the opinion. And the rest is owned by you. Now, we assist in the compilation of that, which is fine, but management has to take responsibility for every number in there. And that's a key ingredient of us maintaining our independence, which we have to do in order to be your auditor. So, the audit results. I said it's a 70-page report, we own two pages. Those two pages are called the opinion, and it was an unqualified opinion. Now, if you really read the opinion, you see how we lose a lot of negative language, meaning that we didn't find anything wrong. We don't say anything that's really positive in anything we do. But the idea behind it is to say to a reader of these financial statements, when they look at them, there's no, there's no, what's the right word? There's nothing hidden. It's all transparent. The numbers are the numbers, and they were accurately reported. The other part that I think is really important is, as an auditor, if we find something wrong, we have to make an adjustment to fix it. We've been auditing the town for several years now, and we appreciate that. We've never had to make an audit adjustment based on any of the information that we get. And what that means to me is that the information you get on a contemporaneous basis, making decisions, budgetary decisions, is accurate and is spot-on. And that's something that I think you should have confidence in, and the information you're getting on a regular basis is accurate. You're going to find in the management letter, we had nothing, what we call material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Those are words you never want to hear, because that means there's something broken down in your internal control structure. There's nothing like that. We didn't find any. And we probably test over 100 transactions for authorization, proper documentation, a good support to make sure it gets posted to the right account, and never had any issues with any of that done. And also, we have, we issue a report on the federal awards. You receive more than $1 million worth of federal awards, which means that one of your grants has to be tested. Pretty much, it's always the special education grant. That has three opinions in it. All of those were also unqualified. So, if you're looking to say to yourself, "What, do I have to worry about anything related to what I'm going to talk about from now on?" No. Everything went smooth. It was really good. Now, the financial statements are broken up into four elements. There's the opinion, there's the MDNA, which is kind of like when I was in high school, I didn't want to read a book, I read the Monarch Notes, and it tells you what, what went on with the finances for the year. Revenues were up, revenues are down, what the capital activity was, what your debt activity was. It's about five pages of a narrative. And that just goes through in basically generic form, prepares the reader for what they're going to see later on in the financial statements. Then you have the basic financial statements and the subsequent notes. They're pretty hefty. When we had, I think three years ago, we talked about Gatsby 68. Yet last year, we talked about Gatsby 74, and this year, we talked about Gatsby 75. Those three pronouncements probably expanded your report by 10 pages, into what they call RSI in the back, as well as the footnotes. So there are a lot of new information that's been introduced to your financial statements over the last three years. And then we have the required supplementary information in the back, which is, is, needs to be put in, we just don't opine on it, but includes pension schedules, OPEB schedules, tells you what you, because the mass teachers' retirement contributes for the teachers' pensions, gives you information on that, shows the budget to actual schedule, shows the budget and the notes associated with it. So that's the encompassing of the financial statement, going from the opinion all the way to the back, which is the budget to actual schedule. Now, the coordination of the audit is pretty important. We break it into two factors, two, two phases. We come in in the spring, I believe in May, and we do all the testing we can do that's not specifically related to June 30th, meaning like, I can't audit cash because it's not June 30th yet. So we audit the, we do tests of transactions, we do the budget, we do debt, we do the single audit. We do as much as we can so that we're not fully loaded when year-end comes around, and we can get that done fairly fast, too. Prelim's about one week, year-end's about two weeks in the field. One of the things to make this audit go well is to have good coordination with management. We would, we like what I call your financial team to be audit-ready. Throughout the year, we've exchanged checklists, we've talked about things that need to be done. Meg has to get me what we call the trial balance electronically, two weeks before we arrive, so we can basically put into our software and get the financial statements as far along as we can. Best I can tell you is, it was a great workout. Meg's team worked very hard. I was very pleased. When we came in, there was a stack of information waiting for us. We were able to plow right in, get started on cash, started on receivables, started on payables. So, with advanced planning, they were able to give us a lot at, the first day we arrived, and it doesn't get better than that. Now, we have to do some things that we can't tip them off to. We're going to do a search for transactions. I'm going to do some inquiries that they won't anticipate. And that's when you measure how good the team is in terms of the timeliness and accuracy of the response. And I just wanted to say thank you for the cooperation they had, because not only am I your auditor, I'm a businessman, too. And you don't want to, you want to get done things as fast as you possibly can. I want to highlight just one little thing. This was a really good year to audit cash. And if you, some of the audits in the past, we struggled with the section, and it's the most volatile section you have. $25 million worth of cash. And the reconciliations were accurate, everything was supported. We probably knocked 10 hours off the budget for cash. And I think I should just highlight that, so that you can be aware, that's a big improvement in a particular area that we had suffered, let's say, grinding through in previous audits. Okay, your financial position. You have a $44.4 million budget, and your revenues came in a little above by $475,000, and your expenditures and encumbrances were under budget by $736,000. Sounds like big numbers, but all less than 2% of the total estimated receipts and less than 2% of your estimated appropriations. So that means, pretty much, your budget process went the way it's supposed to go. You have a general fund balance, which includes two stab funds, and I'll talk about those in a second, of $9 million. That is 20.18% of your budgetary expenditures. Now, the key for that is, that's how some of the rating agencies look. They look to see your reserves, and they compare your reserves to what your budget is. So your total general fund balance is 20%. It's a significant number. It's a good number. It's above what GF, GFOA standards say it should be. Now, in general fund balance, there's something called unassigned fund balance. And what that is, is your unreserved fund balance plus the stab funds. That was 17.72%. This is money that, based on voting, that you make related to the stab funds, plus the unreserved fund balance, which can be used like free cash. You had a significant percentage of that, too. So what this means to me is that the rating agencies, and I think you probably just had one recently because of the bonding, they have you rated at stable, you're AA stable. The possibility of AAA probably not as strong, only because you're a bedroom community, and they look at economic development as one of the things that can create you to be AAA, but that's a strong rating, and it's a good rating for an organization your size. All right, I mentioned the stab funds. There's two of them. There's a general stabilization fund, which has $3 million in it. There's a capital and debt stabilization, which has $1.1 million. Again, part of total fund balance, but the general stab is 6.6% of your budget, and the capital is 2.45% of your budget. That increased $1.3 million of fiscal 2018. That means more money's being put aside. Your reserves are growing. That's, those are the things that I think are some of the positives here. There are no negatives, but it's, I'm going to talk about a couple of things that are liabilities that we've talked about in the past, that are like the elephant in the room. But what this is telling me is that when I look at, and I trended you folks, and I go back to 2014, your, your fund balance overall has grown from $3.38, $3.8 million in 2014 to $8.9 million in 2018. And that's a trend. There's, there's, it's been going up, 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 and it's down a little bit from last year, but that was anticipated because you voted that the STM used significant amount of free cash for one-time items. But you've got a good trend going here, and the percentages are really holding up well. Now, the first big item, okay, let me just step back. The financial statement's broken into three parts. The back is the budget to actual, then we have the fund-based, which kind of makes sense, and then we have the full accrual base, which is trying to make a government look like a business. It's not easy, and it gets pretty ugly. But the two big liabilities you have are your net pension liability, which was $15.7 million at the end of last year, and is based on your participation in the Plymouth County retirement system. Now, the good news is, is your liability overall went down by, from $18.6 million in 2017. And the reason for that is, the fund increased its funded ratio from 58% to 66%, and it's primarily due that they got a 16.3% investment return on their, on their fiduciary assets, which means...
You're smiling over there.
Which means that... Which means to me that, you know, the liability may not, may have gone down a little bit based on some assumptions, but it's the fiduciary assets that are creeping up that made the liability down, portion of share go down in FY18. The other big guy in the, in the room is your OPEB liability. Gatsby 75 was implemented in FY18. And what it did, previously you would be reported using what they call Gatsby 45. And what that meant was, is you only reported as a liability, the portion that you should have put into a trust, but, but did not. It was called the ARC, the annual required contribution. Well, they tossed that out, and they said, "We're going to put the whole thing on the balance sheet, net of whatever investments you have," which I think were like $867,000, give or take, at the end of FY18. You're now reporting a total unfunded liability of $38 million, $38.5 million. This is about a six to seven million dollar increase than previously reported on the prior financial statements. And what it does, and I'm not a page flipper here, but what it does is it makes what we call your net assets, unrestricted net assets, to be a negative $33.8 million. Now, if this was a company, they'd probably say, "Well, we're going to go bankrupt." But you're a government, and you, you've got some funds sufficient to do this. It's just that when you put the full accrual basis of accounting on there with these unfunded liabilities, it puts you in a negative position in your equity section. Governmental debt, just below $31 million at the end of the year. You had a $10.9 million issue in 2000, well, actually it was in FY2019, I think it was October of, and you, it was for the police station, the council on aging building, library and some fields. Now, the way that works is, of the $10.9 million issued, $3 million was used to pay off bands that existed as of June 30th. So what we do is we recognize the $3 million as long-term proceeds, excuse me, long-term proceeds in FY18, and we'll recognize the other $7 million in FY19. Debt service is 5% of the budget, which is fairly healthy, and now that you have the new debt, it's going to be about 6.7% of the budget, which still is a healthy number. I think I might have mentioned to you previously that I thought your debt was a little low and to where it needs to be, because sometimes that, what that means is, we're not paying attention to the infrastructure assets that we should be building, or the vertical assets that we should be putting in. So, I consider 6.71%, or 6.7% to be a good number to maintain. And then when you're putting together your CIP plan, which I'm sure you do, you want to, you want to say, "What is, what, where do I want my debt service to be on a regular basis?" Because if it falls down, that means something's got to be added on. Capital leases, I'm glad to see these things going away. We talked about that several years ago, and there's only two years left on those, and that's for the miscellaneous vehicles and some education vehicles, oh, public safety and education vehicles. So it's going to be off the books pretty soon, which is good. Capital assets, this is all your assets. $90.1 million. You added $33.6 million, of which $32 million was related to the elementary schools, or the school projects, I should say. Public safety and public works, split and about another $1.4 million in additions. For public safety, it was pretty much all vehicles. On the DPW aside, it was the improvements to the streets, some of it paid by Chapter 90 funds, and also you bought a couple of trucks. Other balancing components, I mentioned it a little bit earlier. Cash is the one we pay a lot of attention to, is $25.5 million. You've got $896,000 in your OPEB trust. There's real estate property taxes, motor vehicle, intergovernmental receivables totaling, excuse me, $6.1 million. And then payables and accrued liabilities make up another $6.6 million. We, what we do substantive testing on your balance sheet, which means we actually look under the covers to make sure the numbers are right. So, what we can tell you is, when you pick up this financial statement, both full accrual basis and on the fund basis, you're going to see solid numbers that represent what you did do. And overall, you had a, you know, in my opinion, a decent year. For, for not having a lot of wiggle room, you came up with a surplus of about $1.1 million on your budget. So that's good. Okay, that's a quick walkthrough of like, you know, two, 150 hours on the financial statements. If I just... If I just keep going, talk about the single audit, this is going to take a minute. You have to have a single audit. You spent, if you spend more than $750,000, you have to have it. You guys spent just about a million. $523,000 of that was related to the special education, which we audited intact. I wanted to mention this, too. When I was talking about Meg's team, we had really good relations with the school in terms of Brad, I believe his name. And he was great in getting us information so we could get through these special education things done. And also, at year-end, he's responsible for some things like compensated absences, extremely responsive. So I just want, I didn't want to miss not saying that. As far as the reports for the single audit, no findings, no question costs, three solid opinions, nice, clean work. Most of the people who do this kind of work know what they're doing, and it was demonstrated as part of our audit. Finally, there's a management letter. A big one was knocked off this year, not what we call resolved. That was called the risk, fraud risk assessment. This is something that's been in there probably for seven years. Came out when the COSO Act came into effect, and boards were saying, "I didn't know that was happening in my company." And basically, the SEC said, "You can't say that anymore." And that just migrated down to the governmental sector. Another one that's still open, still an informational comment, is the documentation of internal controls for federal grants. You guys have good internal controls. It's just that the uniform guidance recommended that they, that they be documented so that it would be formalized. Now, technically, they could come in and say, "Where are your internal control documents?" If you didn't have any, I'm not sure what they do. I haven't heard anybody lose any funding because of it. But because it's a uniform guidance, we opine on uniform guidance. That's why this comment is in there. And that would come at, probably the school would have to be involved in that. That's not something that comes out of the side. Cash collections, there's really nothing wrong. We don't know, aren't aware of any issues. However, we try to minimize cash collections at the point of, let's call it sale. So if somebody's going over to get a smoke detector permit from the fire department, I'd prefer to see them come over to the treasurer, give them the money, get a receipt, and go get the smoke detector ticket. That's, so the idea is to eliminate the handling of cash at various departmental levels. The North Carver water dis receivables, they have not been reconciled. It's not a big number, so as your auditor, I don't come concerned about it. However, I do anticipate this to be cleaned up in FY19 because the treasurer's office has taken it over. Previously, it was at another department. And then there's an informational comment in there. Michael wanted me to keep it in there. It relates to the Plymouth County Retirement Association assessment. There's various ways to do assessments, and you are not looked at as this individual entity for the assessments that you pay. You're put into a group, and then the assessment gets spread out. This is kind of saying that there's a better way to do, not a better way, there's another way to do it, which specifically says, "These are my assets, and these are my liabilities, and they're not anyway tainted or influenced by the liabilities of another organization." And finally, there's one new comment for this year. It relates to the processing of invoices. This system that we have here is, one of its designs is that an invoice cannot be paid duplicately. In other words, it can't, that same invoice can't be put in. And what happens is, I cut that out, didn't I? The idea is, what's happening at the school is, let's say, I have 10 invoices from WB Mason. They're putting in one entry for those 10 invoices rather than 10 entries, so that each individual invoice is being recognized. Now, it's not, it's not a bad thing, but it does cause the system not to be able to work the way it's supposed to. And it does cause some issues related to accounting because they have to put some extra effort into processing the invoices and get them right. So the comments in there for the purpose of trying to say, "Can we streamline this thing and make it more, better?" That's all I got to say. Any questions? Thoughts?
Questions from the board? Mr. Dunham?
Mr. Chair, I don't have my packet with me in front of me because I took it home and read through it all. Some of it's, you're looking at it, it's like, "Are we really doing okay?" But hearing your explanation now cleared up a lot of those questions.
Good.
I really appreciate the effort your team puts in every year when you do that. It sounds like we're still holding our heads, you know, as far as communities go, above the norm.
For a community your size, and I'm going to say the demographics, meaning like, I mean, you've got some businesses, but this is not a, new growth is not something that's easy for you in terms of the business side. Yeah, you are. I mean, that's why I kind of highlighted the fact of the reserves and your percentage of your reserves as it relates to your expenditures. These are extremely hefty. Anything over 10% is excellent. You guys are 17%, including the stab funds. And even without the stab funds, you're at 11%.
I think what I was getting at, though, is, you know, not to be blowing our own horn, but what the heck? We don't do it, no one's going to. How do we compare to other communities as far as our operation and our financial staff and how we're doing there? You know, are we doing, you know, are we at an A level, B, C?
I'd say you're closer than the A level. And because what I've seen over the, I mean, I think we, I don't know how long we've been together with a client, but I've seen a market improvement in pretty much every area in the financial section, from personnel to policies to the kind of things that I think are necessary to make a financial team, or let's say, give credibility to a financial team. You've worked on that, and that's improved you. And I know some of our clients don't have that, don't even come close to that, and they're about the same size as you folks.
Thank you very much, and I would like to especially thank our financial team sitting up here in the front row. They've done a lot of hard work, and they continue to do great work for the town of Carver. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, it's good news. Yeah, thanks.
Meg, did your team want to make any comments relative to the results?
We're very pleased with the audit, and we enjoy working with Powers and Sullivan every year. They do an amazing job and so easy to work with, and they're also just an excellent resource for us. So we're pleased.
Well, it is nice to hear that the fiscal effort that we've put in over the last few years is paying off. It's required the board to make some very difficult decisions, and not every department has been, you know, I'm sure every department would like to have a healthier piece of the pie. But in trying to balance maintaining a strong fiscal base with spending, it's nice at least if we have to make those hard decisions to see that it's paying off. So, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation on other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEB, by Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien.
Did I say it right?
You did. You said it perfectly. I love following that report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just to...
Thank you.
Go ahead and let somebody know. I just got a text that's saying we're not being televised.
Peter?
Well, that's it. I'm not...
I mean, because I want to make sure people get to see it, Tom.
Me, too.
Far as you know, Peter, think...
I'm going to turn on the video. I'm going to try to check this.
Okay.
It's just one I got. I don't even know who I got it from.
Okay. All right. Well, hopefully then, when it gets to the computer and the TV, it'll all be, all work out then. Okay, so...
So they're only hearing me, they're not seeing me?
They're hearing you, and we will make every effort to make sure that the camera...
My friends say I should be presented.
That's when you have a face only good for radio.
Apparently, I hope I wasn't responsible for the loss of video. But it's a pleasure to be back here. I certainly appreciate the opportunity. Thank you all for the invitation and for your administrator for following up and making sure that I was here promptly. You noticed I was early, and I'm impressed you got me here on time. I wanted to just take a moment. I am blissfully ignorant of the social media here in Carver, but I wanted to take the time as an elected official to thank all five of you for your service as selectmen in the town. I know it's not easy. Believe me, I've seen the slings and arrows that elected officials suffer, so it's very rare that you get thanked, and I appreciate the fact that you guys are committing your time and effort on behalf of the town. I appreciate that because, as you know, this is a return to one of my beginnings here. I had the pleasure of serving as a state representative for part of Carver, although I felt like I always had all of Carver at my disposal and responsible for, from 1996 to 2006. And as I was listening to the chairman hearken back to the 90s and some of the good things that were happening then, I said, "Boy, that's a long time ago." And then I realized, yeah, that's when I was the state rep here. So I go back to all of that. I also would be remiss if I didn't compliment the chairman on his speech. In today's day, where civility seems to have become a bad word and certainly a lost art, I thought what you said was meaningful. I appreciated the sincerity with which you spoke, and I hope that people listen to what you had to say. It is not easy to step front and run for office, whether it's for state rep or selectman, state senator, congress, and anyone that is willing to do that deserves our thanks and appreciation. And it has been my experience, and I can't believe I've been an elected official for 21 years, the vast majority, overwhelming majority, significant majority of elected officials do the right thing every time, and they do their very best all the time. So I thought it was important to just mention that as an elected official, and it is certainly great to be here. I also have to compliment, I got to hear the audit report, compliment the town on their accomplishments. As you know, I am the treasurer for Plymouth County, so represent 27 communities. I have what you would call a bird's eye view on all of them. I can tell you that you have made significant strides over the last number of years, and I can tell you it's not easy because the financial strides that you have made are in things like the stabilization fund, your pension liability, your OPEB liability. They're not fun, they're not short-term, they're not sexy. Your constituents don't call you and say, "Hey, thanks for putting an extra $50,000 into your stabilization fund." They just don't. And yet, it's that hard work that needs to be done, day in and day out, that matters and that ends up in a double-A bond rating. And ends up in the improvement that you're seeing in your balance and in your audit report. You have a great team in place, and you should be complimented on that. I also appreciated Selectman Dunham mentioning your finance team. As the treasurer, I know how fun it is to experience an audit, and I can tell you the time that takes of your team to do the audit work and to get all that information ready is significant. And I would be remiss, too, if I didn't mention, you know, Meg and Lynn and Tanya, and of course, your team of Kathy, Christine, Anne, and Denise. They deserve your thanks for their hard work, and really, the thanks of the citizens of Carver. Those of us in the treasurer's office tend to toil in obscurity, and only if there's a challenge or a problem do we get mentioned. When there isn't one and things are going well, people forget our names. So you have a great team here in Carver, and they should be recognized, and hopefully you get a chance to do that regularly. I'm also impressed that your audit is on your website. I know that once you authorize this one, it'll go up. I can tell you, and this may surprise you, most communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts do not put their audit information up on their website, which drives me absolutely crazy because I get calls all the time for financial information about our 27 communities. And you would think it would be easy to go on and just look and see how each town is doing. And sadly, for whatever reason, they protect that information, or they feel that they don't want to share that information, or they have yet to figure out how to put it up on the internet. But you folks have mastered that. Your financial statements are up there. I had a chance to look at them a little early because I want to be prepared for any question you may ask me, and it's impressive that you do that. I'm also impressed, and just want to touch base on this before I get into OPEB, how you've tackled your capital improvements. You folks have really understood the need to think long-term and to begin to budget for that. The way you're doing that is light years ahead of many of your other communities. I know the question was asked, "How are we comparing to other communities?" You are really beginning to think five and 10 years down the road. Most communities, at best, think one year. Those that are progressive think three years. Very few think five and 10 years down the road. Why? Because it's not fun. It's not sexy. It's not what your constituents call you about. Nobody is calling you and asking you what your stabilization fund balance is going to be in 2030. Nobody is. But does that matter? Absolutely it does. Does it matter today? Yes. But people just don't focus in on that. You folks have taken that step and are doing all of those things, and you're to be commended for it. I'm sure the citizens of Carver aren't applauding the board of selectmen and your financial team on a regular basis, but they should be. You're doing an excellent job, and I, for one, appreciate that. I will tell you, too, that you're visionary, and we'll get segue, this is a nice segue into OPEB. You're visionary because you heard from your auditor the report that Gatsby 75 became effective in FY18. But in 2015, you folks saw the opportunity to join the Plymouth County OPEB Trust, a viable, authorized, statutorily-accepted trust fund for your OPEB liabilities, and began as far back as 2015 to fund that. You were the first people to fund into the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. We now have more than 28 members. You brought your whopping grand sum total of $25,000 to the table, which we appreciate very, very much so. However, with additional contributions, you folks now have more than, and I wanted to make sure I have the exact number, you have a significant amount, but your total contributions have been 958,196 through November 30th. And your investment earnings on that money have been more than $98,000. So you were ahead of the curve. You're understanding that in FY18, Gatsby, Government Accounting Standards Board, is going to come out and tell you you have to do these things. You did them three years ahead of time. So if the citizens in Carver are wondering, "Is our board on top of what they need to be financially?", this is one indicator of the fact that you really are, and you're to be commended for that. I also have to thank the board as a whole for sharing Ron Clark with us. You may or may not know that he serves on the investment subcommittee for the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. He was an original member. He was voted in again, so we have him for a few more years. That investment committee makes all of the investments and supervises the investment for the entire Plymouth County OPEB Trust, the entire PCOT. I can tell you, when we created PCOT in 2015, we expected by 2018 that we would have five or six members, and that we would have maybe $4 to $5 million in assets under management. I can tell you that we now have 28 members, and we have more than $17 million in assets under management, and Ron Clark is responsible for investing that. So we appreciate you lending him to us, and things have gone very well. December was rocky. I heard an investment manager say it was a frothy market in December. That's an understatement, to say the least. But I remind everyone at this table and anybody who may be listening to me, I can't say watching me because I'm not sure that's happening, anybody listening to me, to understand and appreciate the fact that these are long-term investments. We're not investing for five years, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, or 40 years. We're investing for 50, 60, 70, 80 years. We are investing for your grandchildren's children. So we need to be aggressive, we need to be thoughtful, we need to be disciplined, and we need to reduce those liabilities in a reasonable manner, which you folks are doing. You heard your report that your liabilities are coming down, not as fast as we would like, but by continuing to invest in OPEB, you will be doing the right things and producing financial and fiscal stability that you're looking for and that every community is looking for. Again, you remain ahead of the curve. I'd like Carver to stay ahead of the curve. That means continued commitments and investments into your OPEB trust. It's not easy to do. You have a lot of people demanding your attention, your resources, your time, from your public safety officials to your education officials, both appointed and elected. They have difficult tasks. They have jobs to do, they have payrolls to meet and people to provide a service to. And so you have to meet those demands. But at the same point in time, if you ignore the future, you're not going to be able to provide those services continuously. So you've got to balance that, and you folks are doing a really good job of that. You've reduced your OPEB liability from what was $41 million to $38 million by your investment with PCOT and the success that we've had. So you've reduced it by 2.87. This is as of November 30th. We don't have December's data yet. It's still a little early in January. That's a 6.95% reduction in your OPEB liability. That's significant. If you keep on this trend, you'll continue to do that. I'm pleased to report that our OPEB team had a meeting with your team here. Again, similar to your audit report, the financial team is very responsive. They're very helpful when our administrative partner pars, asks for information. It's always forthcoming. I have a report here, and again, just an excellent administrative team. I have a report here, and again, just an excellent administrative team. Meg had it ready for me, knowing that I probably didn't bring enough copies. She did. This is the report that was handed out to your financial team on January 4th. I get to present it to you. If you don't already have a copy of it, I brought one for me, so you have enough for everybody. And again, it just highlights the success that you've had as part of the Plymouth County OPEB Trust program. Once you get it, I would focus your attention on pages five and six, which are really instructive and I think indicative of the financial success that you folks have had. Five just shows how your assets have grown, both through your contributions and through your investment portfolio. And then, of course, page six is showing how your liability has been reduced. It's interesting because your audit team and your auditors have assigned a discount rate of 5.5%. I actually think it should be a little higher. I welcome the chance to chat with that team if they're interested. You can see that we have performed much better than that. Even in the frothy market, we expect that our performance will average, over the life of this investment, that 20 to 30 to 50 to 70-year timeframe, 7%. Most of the other members of our Plymouth County OPEB Trust are having a discount rate of between 6 and 7%. Yours seems relatively low. Obviously, if you increase the discount rate, your liability goes down. I avail myself if anybody has any questions, but accepting what we have as a report is still excellent, and you can see that you're driving your liabilities down, both by your contributions and the investment success and envisioned investment success of the Plymouth County OPEB Trust. I could talk ad nauseam, as all five of you know, all seven of you at the table, about this and any other topic. I wanted to spend a few moments because I was asked to talk about Plymouth County. I have a few things to highlight there, but without going into that first, I wanted to see if there were any questions. I can report that the OPEB Trust is doing well, that we appreciate Ron Clark's involvement. In fact, we now tell him the meeting starts 15 minutes earlier than it does, so that he's prompt and on time, and I can report that he's made the last two meetings well ahead of the appointed beginning schedule, and it will be reflected in our minutes as such.
It really works?
It does.
Wow.
It does. So were there questions from the board for Treasurer O'Brien about the OPEB Trust?
Yes.
Although I suppose you could ask me anything.
If I may, thanks for being here, Tom. The only thing I would say is, I just wanted, if you can do it in like one sentence, tell people what the OPEB Trust is and why you think it's important that we do what you say we're doing. One sentence.
Take two or three if necessary.
Other post-employment benefits, which are all of the municipalities' liabilities for employee health insurance and life insurance, essentially anything other than pension, and it's important because it is a liability that needs to be addressed long-term, similarly to how pensions began to be addressed in the 1980s, period.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
And I guess the one thing I would point out is that making contributions to PCOT in order to lower our long-term liabilities for OPEB is important, but we as a board have also taken other actions. Every year, we have to make the decision as to how much to put away, and that comes into direct conflict with other departments that need the funding, because we put that away before we determine how much money do we then have available. We consider it part of our fixed cost, and if we decide to increase the contribution going into OPEB, then that is removing money that's available to share with the other departments, and that is part of what I referred to as a tough decision, because we get questioned by other departments as to why are we making this. So that's why, one of the reasons we wanted you in, so that people could understand why it's important that we do this, and they can see from listening to the auditor and yourself why this is important. And it also does mean that we're looking down the road, and I'd like to think that boards of selectmen 40 years from now here are going to appreciate the effort that we began here in 2015. Additionally, there are other actions we've taken. We've moved with a number of unions to go to 50/50 on healthcare for new hires, which means down the road, when they get into retirement, we're not paying 75%, we're paying 50%, which also has the effect of lowering future liabilities. And we're constantly looking for other things that we can do that does not significantly impair retirement benefits for our employees, but at the same time is trying to look ahead to try to address this issue. I don't, I mean, I know as of now, the state has not come in as they did with pensions and mandate that you will pay off X amount of your pension liability over time until, what's the date that it's basically supposed to be? Does it vary by town, or is it?
So it was mandated when the law was originally passed to be fully funded by 2028. With the financial crisis of 2018, they extended it to 2030. Six months later, they extended it to 2040. So all pension systems must be fully funded by 2040. I'm pleased to report, by the way, that the Plymouth County Retirement Association, of which I also serve as a treasurer and chairman, will be fully funded by 2029. We have reduced our funding schedule, one of the more aggressive, and I would like to talk about that in a minute, once you're finished, Mr. Chairman, but we fully expect to be funded by 2029, which is well ahead of the state, which I think is now at 2035 or 2034, and most other communities that have pulled back into the mid-2030s. We believe that an aggressive funding schedule gets us to a point where we want to be. What I can tell you, and just to segue into your other comment about why the state and the federal government aren't mandating some of the fundings to OPEB that they do to the pension system, it's my belief that what they're waiting for is the pension system to be fully funded, and what I'm expecting communities to do is take that relief that you will get in the funding of the pension system and apply that to the OPEB liability. If that is done, it's a less onerous impact on the individual budgets that you're talking about, and really something that communities should begin to think about. So the town of Carver should begin thinking of 2030, and I know that your team is, because I've had talks with your town administrator and others, in 2030, what are you going to be doing with the reduction in your pension liability? Not liability, but pension appropriation, because you're not going to have to make that, it's only going to be your normal cost. So what I would be recommending, of course, is that you dedicate all of that to your OPEB liability, and I believe that you could have that OPEB liability paid off in a much shorter period of time.
And Mr. Chairman, last year, actually, beginning of this year, the board did take that action in their financial policies, that when that point happens, that you would roll that money in there. So you've already established that as a policy, as the treasurer's recommend that we do, from his comments from last year. So we have taken that step.
And probably one of only a few communities of the 351 that have already done that. A lot of people aren't looking that far down, so again, Carver's to be complimented for its vision. It's difficult as you get touch with the daily activities and things you have to focus in on, and we're asking you to think so far down the road, but you are.
Any other questions before we let Tom finish with his other items that he'd like to bring to our attention? It's all yours, sir.
All right, thank you. Just I wanted to talk briefly, because I also serve as the treasurer of Plymouth County, some of the things that we do and offer, you're all familiar, of course, with our registry of deeds. We believe it's the finest east of the Mississippi, actually, forget it, we think it's the finest in the United States of America. We hope, if you haven't been, that you come and take a look at what we have to offer there. We have the oldest land records in the country. We have a vault where those records are stored. You can make an appointment to come and see the very first recorded documents in the United States of America, and we encourage you to do that. We also maintain, own and maintain the three courthouses, Wareham, Hingham, and Brockton. Wareham is of particular importance to this region. I can tell you that the county commissioners and the county team argue on behalf of that courthouse regularly to keep it in a full-functioning mode and continue to do that. We've made a lot of improvements. In addition to the things you know, however, you probably are unaware that we have a fire patrol airplane. It's a 1956 Piper Cub that we operate out of the Plymouth Municipal Airport. If anybody wants a ride, you can arrange one through the town administrator. It's not for the faint of heart, however, because it is an older vehicle. I would be remiss, again, if I didn't thank and really extend our sincere appreciations to your fire chief, Craig Weston, who has been a big advocate of that program. He understands its impact in Carver. In fact, when we had some of our communities that may be a little less rural advocate that perhaps we don't need a fire patrol airplane, Chief Weston, I think, single-handedly was able to persuade the entire room of the value that that plane has, and I think the fact that it only costs us $17,000 a year to maintain, operate, and run was another factor in the continued support of that program. We have a parking department, a parking ticket processing department. Carver does take advantage of that. The town of Carver in fiscal, in calendar year 2018 issued a whopping grand sum total of 52 tickets. More revenue if you issue more tickets, I'm not suggesting you do that. Of those 52, you issued 42 of them in July, so we know when the big months are for those scofflaws here in Carver. I will point out, however, by us processing these tickets for you, it saves you personnel, you don't need to have somebody doing that, we save you time and money, we process that, and every month we send you a check. Every month you write a ticket, that is. So there are some months you aren't getting a check from Plymouth County because you didn't write any tickets. You've been a longtime member, back into the early 80s, and we appreciate that. If you have any needs, please let us know, but we believe we're providing a good service. Our extension program, you folks are active participants in our extension program. Some people think of that 4H, but it's extension and 4H. We have an embryology program that you folks have taken a significant advantage of. We have a lot of participants from the town of Carver, you may not know that, and you have some very active 4H rabbit clubs here in the town of Carver. I am also pleased to report that the county of Plymouth had its first new hire in a long time, because we're fiscally responsible, because our treasurer is a curmudgeon, and we just recently hired Harley Ian Hamilton from the town of Carver as our newest hire. So in our extension program, we're excited to have her on board and looking forward to that. If you have any questions, I would encourage people to call our executive director, Molly Volmer. Her number, 774-404-7021. We also brought on last year, at the recommendation of our 27 communities, an entomologist. For those of you who aren't familiar with what an entomologist is, we call him our bug guy. He studies insects. He was brought on because of the prevalence of tick-borne illness in our surrounding counties. He runs an excellent program. In fact, incidence of tick-borne illness are down in Plymouth County over the last 12 months. We like to think it's because we bought an entomologist on board. We think it may be a small part. We're not sure what the other reasons are. His name is Blake Dinius. His number, 774-773-3404. He does a great job with school programs. In fact, he was here in Carver in May 2018 to make a presentation to the Carver Environmental Club, which is a group of teenagers interested in the environment. However, I would suggest that the Carver School System reach out to Blake. He does a program for 5th, 6th, 7th grade that's excellent about tick-borne illness. It's not just Lyme, but some of the other diseases that ticks are responsible for, particularly helpful in a rural community like the town of Carver. We also do some bulk purchasing. We bulk purchase fuel oil. You folks don't take advantage of that, perhaps you don't need to. We do a gas and diesel bid, also something that you don't currently take advantage of. One of our biggest ones is our vehicle bid, and I would suggest that it may be something you want to look into. It is one of our most successful bids. We have more than 300 governmental entities around New England that participate in our bid. They've looked, and we are the cheapest mechanism through which to buy a municipal vehicle. It does cost, and I know this may off-put people, but it does cost $200 to be a member, so that could be a significant hurdle. I say that, of course, tongue-in-cheek. We do hope that it's something that you look into, especially if you have some purchases coming up. We actually had one of our police chiefs in Plymouth County not believe that we were the cheapest. He checked all of our competitors and found out he actually saved between $400 and $500 per vehicle by bidding through us. He came back and gave us an extra $200, I think just in anticipation of the following year. Finally, we have a new one. I'm going to just hand out a quick announcement of this. We do general office supplies. We actually, for the first time, just to show that Carver isn't the only innovative team member in Plymouth County, that Plymouth County can be innovative too, first-time partnership with the Hampshire Council of Government in a general office supply bid. It's through WB Mason. The website and information is in the press release. We have found that it is the cheapest in the Commonwealth, so if the general office supplies that the town of Carver is looking to purchase, this may be a way to do so and to save a little money along the way, because that's what we like to do here in Plymouth County. I really appreciate your time. I know that I've gone over my limit. I was only afforded 40 minutes, and it's been 37, but I always welcome the chance to be here and love coming back to Carver, and would appreciate another invite if I haven't bored you to tears already.
We thank you very much. I think it was important, again, to get a better understanding of OPEB, because we are coming into budget season. We will be making decisions as to how much to dedicate to our OPEB contribution this year, so I think having this sort of discussion is important as we enter into the season and have to make those decisions. So thank you for coming tonight and spending the time with us.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, Police Chief Doofly, a recommendation on promotion of Brian Burial to sergeant, and appoint retired police officer Michael O'Donnell to special police officer for the remainder of the fiscal year. Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, sir. And thank you again for having us. Before we start, if I could just qualify a couple of things. The tickets that he's mentioned are parking tickets, not traffic citations. And the biggest use of parking tickets in the town of Carver is beach parking. That's why they're in July and the August, and just so you understand, it's not, we're not doing our job, but there's not a lot of places to write parking tickets in Carver. So thank you for having us tonight. This is one of the best duties I get to do as your police chief. We are talking about bringing a police officer up to the rank of sergeant to be part of the leadership team to replace a retired sergeant. Sergeant O'Donnell retired December 31st after 20-plus years of service, and we're looking to ask you to promote a police officer to replace that sergeant. Before I start, just a little bit about the process. We are in civil service at this moment. The civil service process starts with a written test that is based on law enforcement study materials. Everybody has the same materials to study. They study for probably about nine months of the year, and then they take a written test. That test, once it's graded, results in a certification, a list of people who pass the test and where they stand on that list based on their score. This current certification, it contains two officers. Two of our officers took the test and passed, so that's how we start the process. From there, I conduct an interview, myself and Sergeant Samento, of both candidates, just to get a feel for how they would handle certain scenarios that a police sergeant in the town of Carver might encounter. And from that, I'm able to use those, that information to make a decision on who I would recommend to the board, the appointing authority, to be promoted to the rank of sergeant. One of the things that happens in civil service is, based on that rank, if you're number one on the list, then if we decide, based on the interview, that we didn't want to hire you because of, you didn't do well in the interview, we would have to be able to articulate reasons why we didn't want to promote you and why we were picking the person below you. But since we're going with the person who's number one on the list, we don't have to indicate that, that we're not bypassing anyone to do this. This is just the process. We've got the list. Officer Burial is number one on that list, and he was interviewed by myself and Sergeant Samento, and did an excellent job, as well as the other officers on the list, did a good job with his interview. But it gives me great pleasure to bring him before you tonight and ask you to vote to promote him to sergeant. Nobody recalls him. Brian's been a police officer since 2005. He came onto our team in 2014 from Wareham. He's been an excellent member of our department, very big in our community outreach efforts, and actually taught at one of our most recent citizen police academies. He's an excellent asset, a very good catch from the town of Wareham, and I'm very proud and very happy to bring him before you tonight and ask that you take a vote to promote him to the rank of sergeant. That's all I have on that. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Does someone want to make a motion to make that appointment to sergeant?
Make a motion.
Second. Discussion, questions?
Great guy.
I've got nothing to say, except I look forward to when you have your sergeant stripes on. You've done some great work with the police station building committee, and you're active really in the town, and I think this is fantastic, and you have my wholehearted support.
Thank you for your service to the town.
Yes, thank you for your service, Ben.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Shall we join him out front quickly?
We'll come out and join you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I put you right in the center.
Congratulations on that, so we'll get him the picture.
Congratulations, Ben.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I should, if I knew how, if I knew what it was.
All right, Chief, I think you have one more item to bring before us.
Yes, well, thank you very much for your vote. I need somebody to sign this piece of paper, if you don't mind, and I would like to bring Sergeant Burial back up before the board at the next meeting to have a formal pinning and swearing and ceremony. Tomorrow morning, I'd like to have him sworn in by the town clerk so he can begin working and doing his responsibilities as a sergeant, but I'd like to have him be able to come with his stripes on before the board at the next meeting, if that's okay. All right, well, thank you very much. And then, as I mentioned, Sergeant O'Donnell did retire as a full-time police officer on December 31st, and in keeping with a program we've started this past year, retired officers and special officers
Congratulations on that, so we'll get him the picture.
I was a Wareham government employee. I hadn't been paid in a month and a half for the $10 picture.
Congratulations, Brian. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I should, if I knew how, if I knew what it was.
All right. Chief, I think you have one more item to bring before us.
Yes, well, thank you very much for your vote. I need somebody to sign this piece of paper, if you don't mind. And I would like to bring Sergeant Beryl back up before the Board at the next meeting to have a formal pinning and swearing and ceremony. Tomorrow morning, I'd like to have him sworn in by the town clerk so he can begin working and doing his responsibilities as a sergeant, but I'd like to have him be able to come with his stripes on before the Board at the next meeting, if that's okay. Cool. All right. Well, thank you very much. And then, as I mentioned, Sergeant O'Donnell did retire as a full-time police officer on December 31st, and in keeping with a program we've started this past year, retired officers and special officers to do details, I'd like to request the Board take a vote to make Sergeant O'Donnell a special police officer for the purpose of being able to do details in his retirement.
I move to appoint Sergeant O'Donnell, Special Police Officer, for the rest of the fiscal year.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Good job, Brian. Now, we move to the personal code update. Tom Walsh to provide an update and a vote from the Personnel Code Committee. Welcome, Tom.
Good evening. The past couple of years, a small group consisting of Elaine Weston, Carol Julius, and myself have been asked by the Town Administrator to review the Personnel Code each year for different reasons. Of course, the Personnel Code is the code that covers people who are not in a union, the rules that they work by. This year, the Town Administrator asked us to clarify some provisions that were somewhat ambiguous and subject to different interpretations, and also to look at the provisions of the Personnel Code versus the, some of the labor contracts, to see if there were things there that could be brought closer to each other, so in the interest of fairness. So this resulted in us redefining how vacations are accrued and credited in the first year of service, with an example included in it. The previous one was just reverted, it was prorated, and it really was not clear enough. And that's Section 10-2, which was for Department Heads and Supervisors, and Section 10-3, which was for non-supervisory, hourly, full-time employees. Section 10-5 talks about how vacation is earned based on the previous year's service and then credited on July 1st. And because of the changes we made in 10-2 and 10-3, we had to make an amendment to 10-5 in order to exclude people in their first year of service. So that's all that amounted to. Another section that was ambiguous and subject to different interpretations was, if someone were to terminate in a year, what vacation would be due them? And obviously, they would be due any vacation that was credited them last July but not yet used. But it was also somewhat ambiguously worded that they were also due whatever they accrued in the year in which they were leaving. So we looked at that in order to clarify the wording, and we decided that for a simple termination, that we would recommend to the Board that the terminating person would simply get whatever vacation that was credited to them last July and not used, except of the situation of retirement, when someone was actually retiring and truly retiring in the way of filing with Plymouth County and the like, that they would get not only whatever was granted them last July and not used, but also whatever had been accrued in that year in which they were retiring. That created the need to create a definition of retirement, which is Section 10-10. And the final change we made was on the sick leave buyback. We felt that the benefits of how much sick leave the town could buy back at the point of retirement was much more generous in most of the union contracts than in the Personnel Code. Personnel Code limits the amount of sick time you can accrue to 165 days, and then says that you can only buy that back at 50%, which is already pretty self-limiting. We didn't feel that there was a need to also have a $10,000 cap in there, which was relatively new, put in a couple of years ago. So we recommended that that be removed. And that is it.
And are you looking for a vote from the Board to approve these changes?
That would be the idea, yes.
I move that we vote to approve the changes outlined by Mr. Walsh.
Seconded.
All right. Further discussion? Anything, Tom, that strikes you as being a major change, or these really primarily clarifications?
Really, just mostly clarifications. I think that I'm proud of the fact that the group really did do a good job of clarifying some of these areas that have been problematic and subject to interpretation. But nope, nothing major there.
All right. No further questions?
Nope. Good job.
I just wanted to apologize for missing your presentation, but I did read it, just so you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your effort of you and your committee.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go to the Town Administrator update.
Keep it quick.
When the taunting begins.
I haven't had supper yet. Keep it quick. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I'm going to pass out the 10-year pro forma that we went over in late fall, but we did not take a vote on that. This was dated 11/20/2018. I think, as you've heard tonight from both the auditor and also from the County Treasurer, that, you know, Carver does things a little bit different than most, and that we don't plan for one year out, we don't plan for two nor five. We plan for 10 years out, and that's part of the financial policies that you have all adopted. What you're going to see here in this document, again, it's the same format that you've seen in the past. In 2020, we're projecting a revenue of $41.6 million. That's about a third way down on the green area. That's made up of a couple of major components. It's made up of the tax levy, which would be $25.7 million, state aid, which would be $12.1 million. Keep in mind that state aid has relatively been flat and declining for the town of Carver when you take in the offsets that come with it. So this is just the revenue piece, and then further down this chart, you'll see the offsets. We are anticipating about $150,000 increase in local receipts and about almost a $5,000 increase in meals tax. We're projected to collect $124,000 in meals taxes. This was also adopted in 2015 by the Board and also by Town Meeting. So that's our revenue. From there, when we start to look at the major categories for our fixed expenses, we come up with $1.39 million. That is, in essence, the offsets that we get from the state aid. If you see, that's gone up from last year, so they're subtracting, taking more money away than we're receiving. Following by that, we have several major categories that add up to $3.5 billion. The first and the largest is the money that goes into our capital and debt stabilization. That's $3.1 million. Following there, we, as part of our District Improvement Financing Plan, $123,000 goes to the North Carver Water District. This has tied into new growth that's occurred in the last few years. You will also note that this year has not programmed any money to go into the general stabilization fund out of tax levy. And primarily, we have met the objectives that the Board of Selectment has put together for our general stabilization, and that now has $3 million in it, and which is the target that was established. So we're not proposing any additional money there. $25,000 into the compensated absentee fund, which is per our auditors. And this year, we're looking to put in $245,000 into our OPED trust fund, on top of, you know, I think you heard tonight, we have about $1 million, including what we've contributed, plus the interest that we've earned on that. So that's $245,000 into the OPED trust fund. What that really did is took money that was going into the general stabilization, which was $25,000, and we've added that into the OPED to double that to $50,000 increase a year. So it's kind of a net wash on that. From there, we then start to look at some other townwide shared budget details, Town Meeting Articles, Reserve Fund, Old Colony Votech. We're projected to be $1.26 million in 2018. That is a significant increase. Predominantly, that's what happens when an additional student or two gets added into the program. That's why you see a larger cost increase from that standpoint. And then we have our snow and ice removal, which is $284,000. Again, I think when we started this plan, the town was putting in somewhere just north of $100,000, $150,000 in snow and ice. We know that we spent, you know, in excess, on average, of about a half a million dollars every year on snow and ice. We can't make that up in one year. That is the only account that we can deficit spend. We do clean that account up at the end of the year when we do make some transfers, but we're slowly trying to grow that by a 10% increase year over year to try to help catch back up as to where that number should appropriately be budgeted. And it may take us eight to 10 years to get to that number, but it's something that we couldn't do in one year. And again, it's something that we, due to the financial policies we have, we do have the ability of making that hole at the end of the year. So with that all said, when you subtract revenue from our fixed expenses, that leaves us $33.9 million, which brings in an additional $825,000 of operational revenue to the town of 2.44%. Breaking that down into the 70.3 to the school and the 29.7 to the rest of the town. And I think, as everybody knows, our school share is one of the largest in the state with the 70.3%, which I think emphasizes the history the town has in committing its funding to education. Which then leaves a school budget of $23.84 million for their budget for FY '20. Just focusing on the school for a second, both the Superintendent and the School Business Administrator, Finance Officer, we have been meeting on this sheet since, I want to say, August of last year. They're aware of every number, they've agreed to every number, and they've accepted that that's what their budget's going to be, and they're building their budget around that number. So this is no surprise to them. Again, I think, as our auditor mentioned, you know, there's a great working relationship with our financial team and also the School Finance Department. And then finally, for the town's operating budget, it would be $10,007,1 is what we're projecting for the town's operating budget. I do want to call your attention to the last few numbers, and if you look at our OPED valuation that we had from 2011, when the Board established its policies, that's what the numbers were that you were looking at, which would have meant that we had a $65.7 million OPED liability as of 2020. Through many of the initiatives that the Board of Selectment have done to combat this, as of 7/1/17, our OPED liability was $42.3 million. Now, that's based upon the actuarian number. I think, as you heard tonight from Tom, I believe the number that he said is that, I'm sorry, from our auditor, is $38.9 million is really what our number is. But just going what we have the report on, and we will be doing a new report on 7/1/19, is that those initiatives that the Board has taken have saved over $23.5 million in reducing down our OPED liability, that the town would have been responsible for had you not taken the proactive steps with your financial policies, with all the different codes of conduct and the organization that the town has taken, and some of our debt service policies. So, you know, here's quantitative information that you can look at, that's also consistent with our auditor, that shows some of the policies playing out to the town's benefit. So with that, I'll take any questions. Otherwise, we do need to have a motion to adopt this as the proposed 10-year Carver forecast for FY '19 through FY '30 dated 11/20/18.
Questions from the Board?
Nope. I've seen this. This is good.
Did you have something, Mr. Nunn? I guess I had a couple of questions. There's been a lot of discussion up on Beacon Hill about the legislature trying to get together to figure out how to revise the school funding formula, a lot of recognition that a lot of cities and towns are not being properly remunerated for their actual needs. I think we'd count ourselves among them. I'm guessing that there's going to be probably no initiative that's going to happen fast enough to affect us for the current fiscal year?
That would be correct, and I want to talk about that in one second, but I just noticed I forgot to leave out one important detail. If you go to the fourth line of this document, you see it's blank. And what that was is, that was the $55,000 that was projected for personal property. That initially, or in the past five years, has gone to the Capital Outlay Committee. And, you know, since we have gotten to the point where we have stabilized our capital assets and able to invest in the town to make sure we're not going backwards...
Going to the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Capital and Debt Stabilization Fund, sorry. That $55,000 has been reallocated into the operation budget. So that was moved into the 239 number, plus some additional new growth that we were anticipating this year. So, in essence, that's reallocating how we had done the budgets, which I know the Selectmen have had discussions with on the School Committee and the Town Administrator and Superintendent had worked through trying to put the $55,000 back into the operating budget. So I failed to mention that in my presentation. As it relates to state aid, I think there's two things that I want to leave you with, is that, first, to answer your question, no, we do not anticipate any significant changes happening for the 2020 distribution of funds from the state. The formula is broken. The state recognizes the formula is broken, and they recognize that they need to do things to improve that. However, the formula is broken is how they distribute the pot of money. And the challenge with that is, no matter how you change the formula, it's still the same pot of money. So some communities are going to make out better when the formula's changed, some are going to make out less, but it's still the same amount of money that the state's going to be distributing to each one of the communities. Now, Carver, as many of you have heard in our joint meetings with the School Business Manager, and he can explain this a little bit more eloquently than I, is that Carver is in a position called, held harmless, from the standpoint that, going back 10, 12 years ago, we had significantly more people in our school district than we do today. Size of households have come down, many different reasons, charter schools, private schools, Catholic schools, whatever it may be. There's many reasons why we have less students than we have before. What happened is that Carver was receiving a certain dollar amount based upon a per-pupil cost times the number of pupils, and that had a dollar value. Well, what the state doesn't do is reduce that dollar amount, even though you may have had a population drop. So they've kept that dollar amount, even though our population is smaller. And that's one of the fears that we all have, at least from the finance folks that are looking at this, whether it's Meg, myself, or Brad, or even Scott, is that if the formula is changed, and there are many communities that are like us that are held harmless, that if that formula is changed, they may come back and do a reset. If they do a reset, we have several hundred pupils less than we had before, which may reduce the money that we may get from the state. So that's kind of the yin and the yang of, be careful what you ask for from the state, and that's why I go back to starting with, the pot of money is the pot of money they have. How they distribute it is what's up for discussion. But I do not expect any changes for the FY '20 budget.
And I guess my only concern is that, in our meetings with the School Committee, we have pledged that we will work with them and get as creative as possible to try to find additional monies. Because we are a small town, we have limited resources. It's why we're hoping that we will have some opportunities and ventures that come into town that will help us generate additional commercial revenue, but for right... town that will help us generate additional commercial revenue. But for right now, dealing with what we have, we need to make sure we maintain a viable school system, and that means we all need to work together to try to make sure that the schools are getting the money they need, and all town departments really are getting what they need. But again, our resources are limited.
That's right. And then, again, this is the first year that that change was made to reallocate money from the Capital Debt Stabilization Fund that would have normally gone there into the operating fund.
All right. Was there a motion to approve the...
Not yet. But I move that we go ahead and approve the 10-year forecast from FY '19 to FY '30 dated 11/2018.
Is there a second? Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Real quickly, I'm just passing out also. You know, as we've talked tonight, Carver doesn't plan one or two years out. We have a 10-year Capital and Debt Stabilization Plan. I am pleased to report that, based upon what our known future capital costs are going to be, that we have this projected that the town can afford all of the equipment that it's going to need over those 10 years. This document was approved by the Capital and Debt Stabilization, by the Capital Outlay Committee. I'm just passing it on again for reference. I'm not asking for a vote on this tonight, but prior to town meeting, we will need to take a vote on that document. But again, that was voted unanimously from the Capital Outlay Committee. I will point out one thing is that our DPW, Operation and Maintenance Department, may want to come back and re-change title on one of their items as they've been doing some more research after the Capital Outlay Committee approved a certain piece of equipment. The piece of equipment that they thought that they were going to purchase doesn't have as good a performance record as they thought it was, so we may have to change the wording, but the dollar amount should stay the same. So that is our Capital and Debt Stabiliz, 10-year plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One quick question. Looking through this, I don't, and believe me, I'm very happy to see it there, but I don't remember the money for Tanker Two being budgeted for this year. Was that always planned, or is that something new?
I believe that we ended up, Chief, did we move that up? Or no, that was pushed from last year to this year. Tanker Number Two?
Tanker Number Two is this year.
Yeah, but we had it last year. We couldn't, yeah, so that was last year's, and we couldn't afford it last year with everything going on. So the fire department, you know, worked with us to put it into the 2020 budget. So that's why you have it in there.
Very happy to see it.
Any other questions on capital? What I'm handing out to you right now is the proposed 2020 operating budget. The first two pages is the same format that you see at our town meeting warrant, that goes by each department, what their overall budget is projected to be. And then there's some follow-up doc, pages on some detail. What I want to talk about here is that this year, the finance committee has taken a real active role in reviewing their budgets. And what they have done is they have set up three separate meetings. These are all evening meetings at 7 o'clock that will be on cable. On the 17th, this Thursday, they're going to be hearing the public safety budgets from EMA, EMS, police, and fire. And they're going to be going through each one of those items. On the 7th is going to be most of the town hall departments, including finance, planning, town clerk, COA, library, and recreation. And then on the 21st is going to be outside town hall complex, which is really just focused on operation and maintenance, and the veterans. The veterans couldn't make the 7th, so they wanted to go to the 21st. That's why they're outside of town hall. But with that, what I would suggest is that, you know, if any of the Board of Selectmen have the opportunity to sit through those, those public hearings, we have it set up as more of an informal joint meeting. It's going to be a finance committee meeting, but if we do get a quorum of Selectmen, then we'll turn it into a joint meeting to kind of have the finance committee, you know, do what the finance committee is best charged for, is to going through the details of every budget. And again, we've separated that on three different nights. They have the document that I passed out to you, and then they'll be coming back and make, making their recommendations based upon the balance budget that I presented after meeting with all the department heads to the Board of Selectmen. And then at the end of the day, you have the final recommendation as to what gets presented to town meeting. This is a balanced budget. It meets all of the objectives of all the departments. There have been some very minor modifications to what some departments had asked for. And when I say minor, when you go through, you'll see how minor they are. I think our department heads recognize what our financial situation is, and they budget accordingly for all that. So again, that's what we have set up right now on this, on January 17th, February 7th, and February 21st, which will then come back to the Board of Selectmen from a recommendation from the finance committee, based upon what they've been able to unearth, so to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I think this is an excellent thing, that the finance committee is going to start taking more ownership of the budget. Too many times, we sat through town meeting, and it seemed like the poor finance committee hadn't had a chance to meet as often as they should, and didn't really have a good handle on it. So it was awful hard for them to make a recommendation. This way, by being more proactive, and they're the ones conducting the interviews with the departments, I think this has really helped the town.
All right. Thank you. Next?
Yes, these were just handed to me. The Recreation Committee is actively working with the Landscape Architect. And after having their public hearing, this is the plan that was just handed to me that was presented tonight for the Recreation Committee to kind of relook at this whole complex for a new recreation center. I think what they're proposing to do is, after hearing input from many of the citizens, they're looking to reconfigure some of the ball fields and turn them around. One of the impacts of doing that would be to tear down part of the garage storage facility that's next to the EMS. This will not negatively impact the EMS facility. It's outside the EMS piece. They've looked at additional parking. They've looked at additional recreation areas. They've looked at the relocation of the playground, picnic area, relocating the softball field. Again, this is a work in progress. This is not their final plan. I'm not sure what they actually included tonight as to the additional direction that they've given their Landscape Architect. But they're working within the timetable that they have in order to bring this to the CPC Committee by the end of the month. So again, I'm just sharing what was discussed with that committee publicly tonight. And again, trying to address how best to satisfy townwide recreation needs with improvements of building out that entire area. The Police Station Committee is going to be having its next meeting next week, is what we're tentatively scheduled to do, and to do our preliminary look at the overall budget estimates for the first concept of the police station. That will include detailed cost estimates as it relates to potential different locations of where that could be located. I just want to, you know, warn everybody is that the first numbers that come out are not the final numbers, just as we had with the elementary school, and just as we had with the fire station, and just as we had with the middle high school project, is that the first numbers are extremely conservative. They're generally really high. And that's when the committee starts to look at some value engineering and look at alternative funding pieces. It's not going to come as any surprise, because we've been saying this for months, if not years, is that it is most likely that we will have to go back to town meeting for some additional funding for the police station building, just because we didn't know what the cost was going to be until you get to the design level that we're at. And, you know, through our financial process, and through our capital outlay budget, and through some other mechanisms, we do have some alternatives to come up with that funding that the entire team is working on. And again, I'm just restating what we've been talking about for the last nine, 12 months, that, you know, there will be some additional costs that we have to do for this project. And that was also presented at town meeting. So that's our next meeting with the Police Station Committee. And then the last item that I have on here, Mr. Chairman, is that due to public safety issues, there is many of the white pines that are located between town hall and the school, not many of them, all of them, the ones that have the ribbon around them, that have had the ribbon for the last three or four weeks, as well as a few that are in front of town hall, which is actually blocking the sun from hitting town hall and creating mold on the front of town hall. Those are all slated to come down, again, due to safety issues. Pine trees, white pines are good in forest when they're protected by other pine trees. When they're sitting out here, you see a bunch of widowmaker branches coming off of these. The goal is to get those hopefully taken down before we have our first big winter storm. And in addition to that, I've also been working with the Planning Director and with several of the solar and/or battery projects in the town. And each one of those is, particularly where they're going to be tearing down or cutting down some forest, are going to be coming forward and making a donation to a, into a tree restoration fund that will be able to manage out of our office in coordination with the Planning Director, that will be able to come back and replant, you know, basically non-pines, but more hardwood-type trees, all tied into this campus development and other places in town where appropriate. So, you know, our private sector folks are stepping up to the plate, recognizing that they are, you know, as part of their developments, are going to be taking down some trees. They're willing to donate some money to the town for that. And we'll be working in the near future and be updating the Board of Selectmen on a more regular basis as to how that comes in. But, you know, there is a plan to address what's coming down. And I know some people have asked about why those ribbons are there. And, you know, we've been talking about it at department head meetings and so forth, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone is fully understanding what's going to be happening.
Who's responsible for making the determination of which trees come down?
So basically, it was John Woods and Dave Segentoff are the ones that marked the trees. And they were the ones who made the decision, tied into having discussions with public safety as well.
Okay.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We move the Board of Selectmen update. We'll start with...
Ahead of time? Just five minutes ahead of time?
I'm proud of you.
We'll start with Mr. Robertson.
Thank you. I have a request. I don't know if we need a vote for this, but we had an increasing cost in our transfer station stickers this year. And I neglected to add some components to that. So I would like to bring it to the board. I don't know if it needs to be voted on or what. Please advise me on this. But we need to add pricing for disabled veterans. A disabled veteran called me and reminded me that there was no allowance for our disabled veterans in our town. And so I would like to propose that we offer them the senior citizen discount as half price.
Mr. Chairman, probably best time to talk about this. We do have set new rates for pond-only parking, out-of-town pond parking, fishing tournament, and stuff like that. So I'll wrap it all up with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think especially since it says set new rates, that would imply a vote. So that, I think if we wait for them to handle that, then we'd be good.
Wait for them?
Wait to get to that point in the agenda.
Okay. I thought we were in the Board of Selectmen update, but I will take...
Well, these are your personal updates.
Ah, I have no updates. I was just going to read that, so.
Okay. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. The first thing is that a number of residents have contacted me and brought my attention to the fact that recently there was an electronic affidavit, a deed filed on the Marcus Atwood House, which is currently our COA, on October 19th, 2018. There's several questions the residents have been asking. One is, you know, who authorized this? Why didn't it come through the Board of Selectmen? And I don't know the answers to this.
First I've heard of it.
Why was it done? Why now? And is the town looking to sell or transfer ownership of the Marcus Atwood House COA? Again, I don't know the answers.
Does anybody have any knowledge of this?
Sure. I believe, and Elaine was just refreshing me, and we'll go back and find out the exact date. It's actually something that the board was made aware of, and I believe the board did vote to authorize a clarification of the deed, because the deed was cloudy that our lawyers looked into. Again, this goes back a while, so I may not be as crystal clear as I want to be in how I'm trying to...
What do you say, a while? How far are we talking?
Oh, probably nine months or more.
Yeah.
And...
I have no recollection of it.
And it just took a while for the lawyers to do it. Anyone that thinks we're trying to transfer the property or anything like that, that falls into the fake news category. It's just to clarify and make sure that the town's ownership was there, because when they were reviewing something, and again, I don't remember the detail, that they found out that it wasn't properly recorded at the time when the board voted it back in 19, blah, blah, blah.
1975.
Whatever the year was, yes.
Could you, could you research it and just find out if we did actually vote on it, and then just send us a clarification of exactly what it's trying to achieve?
Yes. There's nothing sinister about this. Again, it's just the lawyers found out there was a discrepancy in the town-owned property, and they're fixing prior inactions of the town back in 1975 or whatever it was.
So I guess the real question, though, that I've been getting from the public is, why that property, and why now? Why are we finding, why was a discrepancy found in the first place? What we're looking for? Why was it done? I mean, I don't have a problem with clarifying a deed if it's something that needs to be done personally, myself. But the question I've been asked is why? Why now?
When you update us, can you let us know what the trigger was, who found what that brought it to our attention?
Would love to. Yes.
Thank you.
And then my own personal question, which, when I started thinking about all this really, is if you read the deed, and the updated affidavit, it talks about the properties to be used exclusively for public purposes. And I, I think, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I believe there's a difference between the word use and access. So I guess my question to the board is, perhaps we should address that. It seems to me that if you, if you just said they can use the building, if the building were sold sometime down the road, that would mean that maybe the public gets access to it, you know, for a couple of hours once a week, if it's a private property. And I'm pretty sure the owner, although, you know, we don't know, because she's no longer with us, probably intended it to be specifically for public use, not just a couple hours a week. So I guess my question on that would be, maybe we could, if we're going to be clarifying deeds here, maybe we could go back and clarify that deed.
Could you have that addressed as well, please? And again, don't forget, anything like that, any sort of sale would have to come through this board and be approved. It's not something that can just be...
Not aware of anybody proposing to sell it either.
So, but if we can just get clarification for transparency purposes, we'll be, we'll be good. Anything else?
Yeah. The other one, I did write down, because it's like too much information for me to handle. So this concerns the Pine Tree Village and the Pine Tree Village Association. The president of Pine Tree Village actually reached out to me recently, and she explained that there's, they're having an issue that needs to be addressed. Basically, the town participated in the Carver Halifax Housing Rehabilitation Program for some time. I don't, I'm not aware if we're still participating, that issues loans for housing rehabilitation based on income. And one of the neighborhoods in town that, where residents received some of these loans was Pine Tree Village Association. So it's a long story. I've written it all down here. One of the residents was evicted. They had gotten one of these loans, and the town of Carver, after the resident was evicted, it was discovered that the town had a lien on the home due to the loan, as does Pine Tree Village Association, to the extent that the funds provided through the housing... funds provided through the housing rehabilitation program. So, and unfortunately, this person didn't carry out the rehabilitation, sounds like they gutted the house, didn't pay their rent, left town. So the issue Pine Tree Village Association is apparently having now is that they've tried to contact the town of Carver since approximately last February. They got one call back, they called various offices, the town administrator, the treasurer, the town planner. And so they're very concerned because they need a response from the town of Carver. They don't know what the amount of the lien is. They put the house, the, the home up for auction, the successful bidder didn't want to buy it because he didn't know what the lien was. And so if they keep doing that, according to them and their attorney, who spoke to her, it's going to be a constant problem. So I think what, what is really going on here is that it concerns me that they really haven't gotten a call back, they, or their attorneys, from the town on this, on this issue. And I know, it, it actually looks like the town isn't concerned about recouping their lost money. I'm not saying the town isn't, it just has that appearance.
Did you contact MEGA, the town treasurer, to follow up on this?
No, I just got this, I just recently got this.
Okay, well, I think that's the place to start, so that we can-
Well, apparently there were lots of offices contacted, not just the treasurers.
Well, I mean, I, I think we need to go to those offices and find out what, what took place.
Well, I think, I think they need to let us know what took place, yeah.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Correct.
So I think that's the place to start.
That's, that's the question.
Did anyone else have any knowledge of this?
Did not.
Okay, all right, we'll grab that first thing in the morning. Anything else?
Thank you.
Mr. Dunham?
No, thank you, I think I've said enough.
Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First of all, I think just about everyone in town knows Ken Simmons. Ken's has been a member of the Carver Housing Authority since 2002. He had a long running show on Area 58 on the air, Ken recently stepped down from the Housing Authority. So I just wanted to thank him for his long service to the town. And just quickly, now that we're past the holidays, I will once again be holding office hours next Tuesday, January 22nd, in the room right next door from 5:00 to 6:00. So if anyone has anything they'd like to discuss, stop by.
And the only thing I'll add is, most of you may have heard by now that our town clerk, Lynn Doyle, has decided not to run for reelection in 2019. And she's retiring, and she's very happy about the fact that she's retiring and looking forward to her retirement, and we wish her well. And I just want to extend my thanks to Lynn for the work and effort that she's put in in updating the department and having it run extremely well. It means we have an opening for someone to run for town treasurer now. I don't believe any candidates have pulled papers as of yet.
Clerk.
Town clerk, what did I say?
Treasurer.
Okay, sorry, my, my error, for town clerk. And so that, you know, anybody that might be interested and have the background that might feel qualified to look at that should do so, as well as all other elected positions in town. Papers are available to be pulled for those positions now as well, so that's all I have.
I have one more, I just forgot.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask the Chair, now that you're Chair, I'll ask you. If we, and I don't know, this may have been corrected, Alan, but I saw three postings of the agenda for the January 28th joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Police Station Building Committee, and none of them act, they mentioned a discussion of the location of the new police station. Nowhere on those agendas does it mention the word "on the community playground," or, as Alan said in the January 5th Recreation Committee meeting, to address the concerns that I had in my open letter. And I'm not asking for that to be put on there so I can see my name in print, I see that enough. I'm asking because I think an agenda should list exactly what's being talked about. And it, it may have already been corrected, so if it has, that's great.
Here, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we have the, for the joint meeting, call to order and pledge of allegiance, and then presentation response by the Police Building Committee, Architect Chief Dupley and another member of the Committee on Sarah Hewens' Questions and/or her stated facts raised in her open letter with regard to the Board of Selectmen's decision to support the Police Station Building Committee's recommendation to build the new police station on part of the existing playground and relocate the 18-year-old playground to another location on the Town Hall campus. That will be at the discretion, discretion of the Recreation Committee, following their public input on recreation needs of the community and present it to town meeting to construct a new playground. So it's mentioned, the agenda has all that covered now.
Good, and that's on the website?
That's on the website, I believe it was, if I remember right, it was posted at 9:00 this morning.
Well, all day long I've been checking and it wasn't-
Well, I went on, because when I saw your email to me about that, I went on and checked, and you go on, you know, for the meeting, and you click on, it says revised agenda, and you click on it, and I can see, I saw where one was posted at 9:00 AM.
That's great.
So I'm assuming the right one was posted, so that's all I can-
That's great. You had mentioned it would be posted tomorrow, so.
Well, no, when I wrote to you yesterday, I meant today that it would be posted.
All right, great, thanks, Alan.
Yep.
Okay, now we move on to an update on the new police station site walk from last Saturday, January 11th, 2019.
Friday.
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 Thank you.
Just any discussion? You guys all went on the site walk?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, that we actually were all there. It was good to go ahead and see, you know, where different things would possibly be. What was really good was to be able to walk out on the 58, down past the fire station to the north, and walk our, work our way back and taking look to, you know, get a real good idea of where the sight lines are, because it's one thing to look at it on paper, it's another thing to actually be there, so. I think it was a worthwhile venture, and I want to thank Mr. Townsend for being the one that recommended that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're, and as just mentioned, there will be a joint meeting on the 28th of this month at 7:00 PM with the Police Station Building Advisory Committee to readdress Sarah Hewens' written issues regarding the selected location of the new police station. And I think we just read exactly what that meeting will be about.
Mr. Chairman, just because I didn't have, read that bar, but after that presentation, then the Board of Selectmen will be able to ask questions. And then we have a public comment period where every member of this public that's there will be able to talk, and we decide it on a three-minute time limit.
Okay.
But that, that way everybody knows, they can come and listen and speak and ask questions.
Next item, set new rates for pond only parking, out of town pond only parking, fishing tournament permits, and prorated rates for parking and transfer station permits for disabled veterans equal to senior rates. So do we have to, are these all the-
I think we'll need to take a bunch of separate little votes on this.
All right, what do we have for set new rates for pond only parking, I assume for residents?
Mr. Robertson, you got that?
Do you want me to just read down them and make a recommendation?
Why don't you read through your list and let us know what they are?
We vote on each individual one?
Sure.
Okay. The town administrator says no, we can go ahead and vote them all together.
Vote them all?
Yeah.
Okay.
But let's, let's take them one at a time, so you, in case there's any discussion for each of them. So the first one is-
First recommendation is to add a pricing for disabled veterans, is the same as our senior citizens, for 50% off, $25 per year.
Okay.
And the second one-
Now, that's for what? For-
For transfer station.
Transfer station.
And it will include the beach stickers.
Okay.
Is the same as, if you have a transfer station sticker, it is also good for pond parking. I'm not, I think that's the way it is, but I'm just, I wanted it perfectly clear. If you only want a sticker for pond parking, you'll be able to have the same requirements as getting a transfer taken, transfer station sticker, proof of residence, and that cost will be $10 per year.
Did you say it's going to be the same sticker for-
No, the same way of getting it, you have to show-
Oh, okay, okay.
That you are a resident.
All right, but it'd be a different sticker for pond parking versus, yep.
Yep. And for a non-resident, pond only parking, currently it's $30 per year for a two dollar, for a two-year period, is going to be increased to $60 per year. Our fishing tournaments are currently $50, and we are looking to increase that to $100 per tournament, plus $10 per trailer. And no permits to be used for July and August for out of town fishing tournaments.
So out of town fishing tournaments cannot be sponsored in July and August?
July and August, right. That's mostly when residents use these facilities, so.
In our understanding, it's some of the history is that that was at one point proposed or may have happened in the years past, and that may have been 10, 15 years ago. So when this issue was brought up, again, that was brought to our attention. So, you know, these are really focused on out of town fishing tournaments, and, and that's when the public is using it. So the local public is using it, and I think that's our first priority.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the fees as outlined by Mr. Robertson.
There a second?
I second that.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, just a reminder, the Town Administrator Annual Evaluation Procedure and Deadline is January 31st for meeting with the Town Administrat- Administrator, and then completing your evaluations. That is all due by the end of January, correct? All right, and if you do not, I believe they've been sent out. If you have misplaced them, please contact Elaine, and she will resend them to you for your, for your pleasure. All right, minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chairman 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Is there anything outside, just what we have printed here? All right, let's move to the minutes of December 4th, 2018. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I move we adopt, approve the minutes from December 4th, 2018.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of amendments.
Okay.
And I'm sorry I didn't send these to you, Elaine. Anyway, so on page three, where it says, Dunham questioned acreage that can be utilized outside of well area. This is on the, on the site that's where the police station is planning to be. Brian Hume, who's the architect, was not sure. I'd like to, the minutes reflect that I actually said, that Hewens said the total acreage is 13.4, the wellhead protection area is 4.5, so there's eight and a quarter acres available. Towards the bottom of the page where it says Hewens read a statement, see attached, and handed out a plan. This is just my, my feeling is it looks like I said nothing here, so I think it would be nice if, if it were summarized what my statement was about. Not everyone's going to want to read, you know, five-page statement, however long it was. So I would appreciate if it was, if she asked if she could read her statement before, before people and the public went home. And then, just a brief thing, it was a statement, you know, explaining why the police station and the playground could coexist on the same site, something like that. Page four, where it says that the Board voted four to one to adopt the proposed plan for the new police station sighting. I would like the record to reflect that Hewens was against the plan that locates the new police station on the playground.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
It, that's kind of going against, this is, you know, this is kind of a special thing, because usually whenever we have votes, no matter what they are, you know, there's not, someone's not singled out to say they voted against it. I could say, I wanted to say, show that Alan Dunham voted for it. I mean, that's kind of going out of the norm, and I question, I would think that if you want your pages summarized, it might be better for you to give Elaine the summary rather than having her try to come up with something and that you may not like it, so then it'd have to go back again, so just for-
I can do that, yeah, no problem.
Just for ease, I think it'd be better if you supplied that.
Can I just address the issue of summaring a handed out document? Is that it kind of goes against how the Selectmen have done their minutes in the past, is that if somebody has a document that they, they're reading from or they want recorded in there, we generally, to my knowledge, have never summarized it, it's just we attach it and we put in there, see attached, here's the document that was done. Because then you have, because our, our minutes are not supposed to be, they're not transcribed, but if you have attachments, those are handed out, that's why we ask people to give us attachments to put in there. So again, I'm just saying that that's different than what you've done in the past. It's your decision how you want to do it.
Yes.
But I've just, we just haven't seen that before, and, you know, then, then if you're having somebody recreate what they want there, how do you, you know, who's actually stating this? What's the words that are there? Who's putting their twist to it?
So-
You know, how do you put down, do that when you're starting to do summaries of people's written response? The written response is the written response, and that's it.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, in the, in the interest of transparency, I think it's a really good idea to do that, because no one is going to read a summary if they don't know, the statement, if they don't know what it's about. The auditor came here tonight, and I'm sure Elaine's minutes do not say, the auditor came to Town Hall. And he summarized what he said, the way I'm summarizing what I said. He said, yep, the town's in great financial shape. And then Elaine can attach the audit, so people interested in reading the audit may read it. But why would they want to unless they know?
Well, what I'd suggest in this case is, why don't we table the minutes for now? You share with Elaine how you would like them to be, and then we'll reconsider them at our next meeting.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table the approval of the minutes of the meeting of December 4th, 2018.
There a second?
Second that.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Approval of a one-day special license, the Carver Sportsman's Club, January 25th, 2019, noon to midnight, I'm assuming this is a liquor license?
Yeah, one day special.
One day special liquor license.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Second. Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we move to the approval of the Ragnar Relay Road Race. Any dates associated with this?
Um, this should be in the attachment.
Sorry, I didn't get down there.
Maybe not. I'll have to get them to you next meeting.
Okay, as long as we have time, it's not happening tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, I move we table the vote on the Ragnar Road Race.
Second. Approval of Carver Farmers Market Sundays on June 9th through October 27th, 2019, from noon to 4:00 o'clock, with setup start from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next meetings, Mr. Town Administrator, please change the meeting date so that we have a second meeting in February, we're going to move to two meetings a month going forward.
Sure, so you do have the February 2nd, 7th and 21st for the finance meetings?
If, but those are, we're not sure everyone can attend those, so let's, let's, let's go back to meeting twice a month on the first and third Mondays, and when we get through June, we can decide if we want to cut back for July and August, which is tradition.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to see them throw back in, so people, when they're reading this, realize we have a joint, the joint meeting on the 28th, because it's not listed.
Yes, that should be added, that we do have the joint meeting of the Police Station Building Committee on the 28th.
Thank you.
All right, that bringing us to the end of our general meeting, we now need to go to an executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions, police and SEIU clerical that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held an open session, and to reconvene an open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second. All right, this requires a poll, Mr. Robertson?
Dave Robertson says aye.
Sarah Hewens says yes.
Ron Clark says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Alan Dunham says aye.
All right, thank you for joining us. Let's look forward to a good Patriots game against the Chiefs coming up on Sunday. It's going to be about zero degrees out, so it should be a chilly game to observe. Thank you for joining us.